September 15, 2014. Thank you all for coming. Please look to the page of the agenda.
Valerie Anderson. Alan Brown.
Yes.
Gregory Cava.
He's here.
He's here. Michelle Gora.
She is here.
Emily Hibbert.
Here.
James Burshfield.
I'm here.
Kelly Lot. Jennifer Pody.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Please keep it down, please, for all tenants if you can take it.
I'm here, Peter Taglen.
Here.
All right, thank you. Opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Anyone who wishes to address this? All right, same no one will move on. Consent agenda. Approval of field trips. Greenagers, Great Barrington, Massachusetts, on October 24 to October 26. This is Region 12. Anyone who wants to remove anything from the consent agenda? Same no one that's through?
What's?
Sorry.
What's?
I'm not sure.
I have it here, one second. Renagers is a community service trip for the Chaparral Citizen Learnout outcome, where they go to lead no trace practices. So it's a group that's going over the weekends. Parents are going, and it's an outdoor education kind of program.
Like a nature's classroom for big kids?
Yes.
Great. It'll be cold.
Yes. Great.
All right, thank you. Report to the chair, I have more questions. Next, professional development highlights.
Can we, can I ask you, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Can we just skip and introduce our new SRO so that they're slay?
Okay. Barbara, hi. Come on up and stand at the podium or stand over here so we can see on the TV. Everyone, yeah, that's fine, right there. This is Ms. Barbara Alankas.
Alankas, yes.
Yes, and Barbara just signed her contract today to be our new SRO.
Whoa.
She is retiring on Wednesday.
Yes.
From Waterbury Police Department.
Oh my God.
She is a sergeant. She is, was a detective, has a lot of experience. We're thrilled to have, she really wowed the committee. And just give her a second to introduce herself, and then if you have any questions.
Thank you, like the doctor said, my name is Barbara Alankas. I'm retiring from Waterbury Police Department. I did 18 years, I'm retiring because I bought some military time, so I'm able to leave a little early before the police department. I was in the Air Force for 10 years. A little bit about me personally, I'm a mom, I have five children, so I love kids. That's why I'm excited to do this. It's kind of, you know, a little bit winding down from Waterbury coming to Region 12. I'm anticipating that it's winding down, but I've taught, I teach in the Police Academy at Waterbury. I teach about five classes there, and so I enjoy teaching, I enjoy interacting. I, like I told the board before, when I would teach in the academy and ask questions, I had to start bringing candy and to lure them to answer me or give me some kind of feedback. So if that's what I have to do here, you know, that's what I have to do. I'll try not to bring peanuts or whatever, but I'm very, very excited about coming to Region 12. I've done a little bit of research, and not to mention that I've been back and forth several times out. It's beautiful, I've taken different routes each time, so I'm so excited to be here. And a couple of things that I will be teaching, obviously, is the DARE program, but there are other classes that I like to teach. I've taught through Community Relations in Waterbury. I've taught the little ones, the stranger danger, bullying types of things, but I also teach dating violence and drug and alcohol awareness for the older age, not just the DARE program. So there's a lot of different things that I'm interested in, working with the staff here and becoming part of the Region 12 families. So I'm excited to start, and like I also said today, as far as what my goals are here, I am a service-oriented person. My children are all kind of followed in that footstep. My oldest is a teacher in Hartford now, she's the literacy coach, and my next two joined the Air Force. My son just got out two days ago, and my daughter was a firefighter in the Air Force when she got out last year. And my fourth is going to school to be an EMT right now. So my youngest is home high school, so who knows what he's gonna do, but he's the baby, so he probably won't serve much. He's used to being served, so, but I am interested in, you know, having that be something that I talk with the kids about, is service, is giving for the benefit of the whole picture. So with that, you know, if anybody has any questions for me, feel free to ask.
On behalf of us, you're certainly welcome.
Thank you.
Very welcome, and we look forward to your work. Glad that you enjoyed.
I do.
Any questions?
Yes, Valerie?
Well, I'm greatly disappointed, because you're talking about older children. I was hoping you'd bring all those kids here to go to school.
Well, I have a grandson.
But tuition-free, that would have been a great thing, but I, you know, I think your background is fantastic. I think your service is fantastic, and is there any way from time to time, I don't know if you can do this, I don't know enough about it, but I'd love these kids to see you in your Air Force uniform.
I don't think we can require her to do that.
Well, no, 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 not as a requirement, but I want them to know that they can do this.
The kids wear it for play. My son wears it for airsoft.
Okay. But what a great example you're gonna be to our girls and to our boys.
And that's the other thing, I'm not all, you know, so, you know, super into, you know, woman power, but I am in a way, you know what I mean? I've done a lot of things, I've worn combat boots for better.
Have you ever worked in high school before?
Pardon?
Excuse me, have you ever worked in high school before?
Yes, I've worked in the high schools in Waterbury, teaching classes, more with our schools, the State Shrew School, which is kind of our last chance school, a lot of the kids that are, have disciplinary problems and things like that.
I was just gonna say that we, last year was the first year we had a school resource officer, and I think we're, it sounds like you're gonna bring a lot of great experience to our district, as we're still trying to figure out exactly how that fits in our district, and we're writing a policy now to kind of make sure everything is driving together. So I look forward to working with you and figuring out.
Thank you, yeah. I think it's gonna be a learning process anyway, because this is a new program to your region, but it is so popular and so necessary now, sadly, because of the way of the world, but, you know, and that's another thing that I liked, is to have a sense of security in the children when they see that I'm here, and the other, I know you have security at the door, just things like that, that they feel comfortable and safe, that they're in a safe place, you know, when they're not at home, they're at school, they're still safe. So I, you know, I hope to have everybody feel that way. I'm very well-trained, military-trained and police-trained, and I even talked to, I don't know who's comfortable with this, but like, I'm trained on a patrol rifle, which I prefer rather than a shotgun, which is what they have the school resource officer carry here. So we're working to get something like that, which is more appropriate for a school.
You met Trupisoli?
I have, yes.
Working with him?
Yes, I've been with him, doing some paperwork.
Are you gonna be made a member of those departments?
I will be sworn in to Washington, Bridgewater, and Roxbury, however, I'll wear the Washington uniform.
Okay, so, all right.
Good choice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So she's sworn in.
Sworn, was your first day in two weeks?
The 29th.
Twenty ninth.
Doing some training with.
Right, before that. So you will see her in, out of uniform until she gets sworn in, because she has to go through some tests with Officer Sordi. So we're very excited, we'll see you in two weeks, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And now you can continue with our finish later.
All right, going back to item five, professional development highlights.
Yes.
Mr. Prida.
Yes. Isn't that wonderful?
Yes, we'll get back to that. I know, yeah.
Good evening, I have different packets to hand out, but I'll hand them out at the appropriate time. So packet that is coming around.
Speak louder.
Okay.
Yeah, but speak louder.
The packet that's going around is specifically an overview of the experience administrators had this summer, because we had a couple of professional learning experiences, so I want to go into some detail and share with you what we learned. First, I'd like to talk about the ASCD conference. We did go to Chicago as I had come in June to express an interest, and so this particular conference was run for principals and educators interested in really framing instruction with purpose, and we got two books, the Formative Assessment Action Plan and Better Learning Through Structured Teaching. So I'll go through the bullets that you have there, because Doug Fisher and Nancy Frye, who were the presenters, are nationally known, they've written many books, their biographies are included on the second page, but there were four main components that we really focused on for the three days. The first was a culture of achievement, and they focused on five pillars, that stakeholders feel welcomed in their schools, no matter what level, whether it's elementary or high school, that students and adults demonstrate ethical standards, and if there is a breach in that, that there are restorative practices to help maintain structure in the school. The third pillar is use choice words that build others' sense of agency and identity. And this sense of agency we thought was very interesting, because that has to do with a student's belief in themselves, and what they can contribute, what they can offer the world, so to have a strong sense of agency, and how do you develop that in a particular child. The next pillar had to do with strengthening the learning process, and this belief that it's never too late to learn, no matter what level the child is at, when we discover a gap, that we must provide service cycles that really do impact that gap. And the last pillar, this was kind of a neat way of putting it, recreate the magic every day, that we feel that our school is the best school in the universe, and how do we do that? How do we reinvest in ourselves and have that be the mission, and that the adults and the students in their buildings also feel the same? The second has to do with establishing purpose. So we're connecting the culture of achievement, which were the first five pillars I went over, with purposeful learning. And what that looks like is rebuilding students' sense of competence, and that students understand the relevance and the purpose of what they are learning. And this really is developed through curriculum writing. So right here in Region 12, we definitely have been very hands-on with this process since last year. As a part of this, the Formative Assessment Plan is specific to gauging that progress, assessing on a daily basis, how are the students understanding today? What am I going to do differently to help the students progress? One of the key factors is the feedback. That feedback is very clear, it's purposeful, it puts the responsibility back on the student, the student understands what needs to be adjusted. It needs to be encouraging and timely, and so therefore they will have a better chance of progressing if that feedback is very clear and very specific. The last piece that they shared with us is this example of gradual release of responsibility. The fact that there is focused instruction, where the teacher is modeling and modeling metacognitively, so that the students can see, wow, how do I think through this problem if I'm stuck? Not just modeling, these are the steps to get it done, but what do you do when you don't understand? How should you proceed in that particular setting? And then that there's a second component, that there's guided practice, that together we're going to experience this. The third component is collaborative learning, where the students now are thinking and discussing the same strategies and techniques implemented in whatever that help-solving activity is, or whatever it is that the teacher has for them to do. And the last piece is that they own it, that they can now do it independently, respond through all of these processes, and the student now is able to succeed on their own. So like I said, the second page is an overview of the organization, Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, and has biography of the presenters. Couple of weeks after we got back, we attended another professional learning experience where I brought in a national author and expert on effective feedback to teachers. Dr. Robin Jackson came to us from the DC area. We collaborated with New Milford, so that their administrators also participated and have helped with the cost of the presentation. And I highlight here specific key ideas of how to really gauge a teacher's need and how to make sure that what we offer is really matching that particular need. So Dr. Jackson talked about strategic conversation, and these are built on a foundation of understanding beliefs and commitments. And there were four foundations. The understanding of what good instruction looks like. And so we did look at videos of teachers' teaching, we collaborated ourselves and tried to calibrate ourselves, what did we see that was good teaching, what did we see that needed improvement? The second foundation has to do with a belief that all teachers can improve their practice, just like we want our teachers to have that belief about the students they teach, that it's never too late for them to learn, that we also have that same belief about our teachers. The third foundation is a commitment to remain engaged in difficult discussions. As we know, when we're giving constructive feedback, it might be difficult to hear, it might be difficult to have that dialogue, but it is critical that the dialogue begin and continue, that we share the truth and that there isn't sugarcoating, because then we're really not preserving the integrity of that adult, and we're really not helping them. The next section specifically is about four types of strategic conversations. Reflective conversations have to do with connecting behavior or attitude with student achievement. The facilitative conversation has to do with commitment specifically to instructional practice. And then there are coaching conversations, which have to do with changes, specific changes required in instructional practice. And what's called directive conversations are requirements. There's no negotiating there, these are musts that the teacher has to comply with. And we went over specific criteria to determine, when do we have these type of different conversations? When is it appropriate for each? So the four types of feedback, diagnostic is we're really identifying a particular problem. What isn't going well? So we're helping the teacher to diagnose that. Prescriptive is we're going to offer possible options to make improvements. You might try this, or you might try that, and then the teacher will decide what might fit best for that particular situation. Descriptive is very detailed about what needs to change. And then micro is just tweaking. Teacher's doing well, we're just gonna tweak a couple of things to even bring it up to the next level. Another piece that was very interesting was the assessing of staff and whether their will and skill was on a particular quadrant. And I have identified the four levels there, high will, low skill, high will, high skill, low will, low skill, and low will, high skill. And Dr. Jackson helped us get through what would best help a teacher, and how to determine whether it's a skill issue or it's a will issue. Administrators do tend to go right to the skill. If something isn't working out in class, they might go right to content-specific skill, but there is such a thing as a will, and so we really got deep into, wow, what does that look like, and what are those conversations gonna be? They're all very different. And so addressing the will became a focus area, and there were four different components here. Autonomy would be a teacher who really needs little direction, is very focused, is a go-getter, can just do things, just kind of say, I need you to do this, and that teacher just runs with it. So you know that you don't need to spend as much time with a teacher that has that level of competence. Then there are teachers that really are masters. Mastery is important to them, and therefore it's, you know, why am I doing this? And so you want to approach teachers as to, in that manner, to help them understand how to get better, because they want to get better. How can I get better? Then there are purposeful teachers, like there has to be a purpose to what I'm doing. So when you're having a conversation with them, you would explain, here is the purpose, this is why we are moving in this direction. And then there's a sense of belonging, that there are adults that really need to feel connected to what's happening in the school, and all of these human characteristics are important in our dialogue. We have an important job to do, but just like kids, they're not robots. They are adults that need guidance and direction and our support, and so it's important that the support you put in place match the needs that we see. And then I wanted to end this overview with a quote that is on the last page of Dr. Jackson's book, and I found it to be quite telling of what we experienced, so I wanted to just read it to you. "Often in pursuit of state-nanated or district outcomes, we forget that the teachers with whom we are working are an integral and human part of the process. But strategic conversations remind us that our goals are ever more important than the people through which we need to work with in order to achieve them. As you are considering your strategic conversational approach, consider whether you are about to add or take away from the dignity of the person in front of you. Always select an approach that honors the inherent dignity in all of the teachers you serve." And so we came away energized and focused from these experiences that we had in the summer, and I'm very grateful that we were able to do this.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For the presentation, and thank you to the administrator groups. Interesting, pursuing this and keeping on topic with this, and keeping us informed. I just have a, I got confused. Could you re-explain the difference between mastery and purpose, when you're talking about addressing the will of the teacher?
Yes. There are, there are adults who ask why questions, and there are adults who ask how questions. How is this going to improve what I'm doing? Others need to know, why am I doing this?
Okay, so it's how from mastery and why from purpose.
Right, so it's delineating between those two, because if we can anticipate that and already start the dialogue that way, then we will have reached that need that they have to know why or to know how. The last thing I want to leave you with is just the experiences that the teachers had when they first arrived, the first three days, they were provided this electronically before school started, and then they also received this when they arrived, and it highlights all the professional development that took place the three days before school started.
This professional development for the teachers?
Teachers, the first three days, they provided this three DVD at the beginning of the school year.
Okay.
There are some blue blotches, I guess there was an issue with the printer, so that's not supposed to be part of it, but adds a little bit of heart.
Yeah.
Okay, they're on the front page. All right. Oh, actually, they're all over this one. Thank you.
Yeah, some have it more than others.
Very cool. Is there any questions? Michelle?
So the two professional developments you told us about with the administrators, how, did everybody participate?
Everybody participated.
Okay, so all the building?
All the administrators.
Okay, great.
All six of us and the superintendent.
That's awesome. And did you feel, I was feeling like the first, the frameworks for targeted and intentional teaching sounded really exciting and inspiring, but did you feel like you took something that you could use? Or like, do you feel like it's going to affect what's happening in the buildings somehow?
Absolutely.
Like, how are you able to transmit that to the teachers?
Well, it really helps us during teacher evals, so we're looking at effective feedback, and we're actually have now even more terminology and descriptors of what we're looking for in the classroom, and the Formative Assessment Process, we're providing feedback to the kids. That aligns with SMART or BALS, you know, the SBA, because there's a component in there about the Formative Assessment Process that teachers should engage in every single day, aligned perfectly, so everything is meshing together, because I presented on that to the teachers when they first started as well, elementary level, one day, and then 612, a different day.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle?
On August 22nd and the 25th.
Yes.
Staff.
Yes.
How did you work that? I'm looking at the eight o'clock hour, did everyone just go to their separate?
They did. Everyone had this ahead of time, and everyone knew exactly where to go. Everything was held here at Chaparral, we're all in one central location. I had presenters coming in for several of these sessions.
Oh.
So everything was pre-planned, I coordinated with Kim what rooms to use, so that's how we were able to, and they got the overview of the day before as well.
Okay, so individual presentations to groupings?
Oh, yes. It was very specific to what was most relevant for groups of teachers.
Anyone else, please? Michelle?
I know this isn't exactly professional development, but I see on that professional development, the curriculum and instruction, the different departments getting together, and I was just wondering, since we've been talking about things that happened over the summer, what kind of curriculum, did we have teachers here? Like, what kind of curriculum writing happened over the summer?
We showed that we had math. High school specifically came in and taught for several days, over two weeks, as much as they could, and we are finishing that up now. We also had world language come in, and that one is complete at this time. We tried to get other areas, but, you know, summer is very, it's the shortest season ever, I have to say. But we certainly did, we had some physical education progress done as well, a couple of teachers came in, a couple of days, so as much as was possible, I provided the time in collaboration with them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, next. Lisa O'Hara.
Hi. I made a little PowerPoint for you. Last year, when I talked about reach, there was a big change, because we had moved to Washington primary this year. You know, we continue at the primary school, so there's not, I think, as much to report on, but I certainly have some pictures, because they're so darn cute. Just to give you a little information on where we are with reach, so, back to school, so this, these are two groups of students, not all of our students, but two groups of students on the right is the bulk of Mrs. West's class, on the left is some of Mr. Wayman's students that spend a little more time at the school, the extended program. So there are two classrooms, Anthony Wayman and Ann Westcott, 31 students between the two. Over the summer, we actually had two families move, so we had 33 planned to be in our program, but two students moved. 12 of them are the extended day students, so that's the 9-2. 19 are just our preschool program, which is our 9-12. All of our towns are represented. There are four students from Bridgewater, 12 students from Roxbury, 13 students from Washington, and we actually have two staff numbers, little ones, in our program as well. And these are just, you know, the classroom pictures of the students, we're working really hard, but we're also playing a lot harder, so. Any questions? Just to sort of go through a overview of where we are.
You had the afternoon session as well, is that included in your extended day?
That's our extended day, that's 9-2.
Okay, so that some of the morning kids, are they opting into the afternoon?
Right, so there's 31 students. 19 of them go home at noon, 12 of them remain, six are in Mrs. Westcott's class.
Okay, so that, some of the morning kids, are they opting into the afternoon?
Right. So there's thirty-one students. Nineteen of them go home at noon. Twelve of them remain. Six are in Mrs. Westcott's class, six are in Mr. Wayman's class.
And, and what is the ratio of staff to children? Because at your, at the very most, you have...
One of our, one of our rooms is sixteen students, the other is fifteen. And so we're, two adults in each room.
And you mentioned student-staff? Like, on the feed, the very, one of the first slides, you said something about staff?
Staff.
Staff, kids, children.
Staff members, children. So, right, so we have two staff members that were able to bring their students this year.
Can I remind you, I forget, which pick up, which one is parent pickup or which one is the bus?
Sure. So the bus picks up at noon. Parent pickup is the extended day program. So if you're a two o'clock student, the parent picks you up. Some parents at noon pick up their students. Not everybody rides the bus.
Okay.
But most do. So it's very much the same as last year, we're running really well. It's, it's great to walk in, we're certainly welcome to visit anytime. I know Mr. Wayman and Mrs. Westcott would love to see you. Kids are going to gym, music, and enjoying it all.
I think it's thirty-two students.
Thirty-one. Thirty-one. We started the year with thirty-three and we're expecting to get students, part of our, part of our birth, or part of our child find requirement is we have, we know of students that are turning three this school year that we know we will be receiving. So there'll be a few more additions over the course of the year.
Just on a side note, my son's a fifth grader and it was the first week, it was his job to help the kids get on and off, the preschool kids get on and off the bus, and it was the highlight of his job as a fifth grader. So I just love the idea of the fifth graders going in and helping the preschoolers, it's a really great, it is added.
And now you have mixed age, right? Or do you have the older kids and...
No, mixed age.
So you have the two-year, ten-month children mixed in with fours?
Right.
Okay. That's a lot of work.
They do it really well. Anne and Anthony do it really well.
No, we don't, I'm sorry, we don't offer or do the extended day for the really young ones.
Sure. It's offered, it's offered to everybody. So if you register for REACH, you tell us what you want, whether you want extended day or do you want just the preschool program, which is our nine-to-twelve. I would say many more four-year-olds take the extended day option this year.
And if I could be indelicate, what do you do to, with the really young ones that might not be able to make it to the bathroom on an extended day situation? That's quite a, a chore for your staff.
Well, they, they were, they have sort of scheduled bathroom times, right? So if they know that there's someone individually that needs some special care or attention on that, we have the parent professional support or the teacher's support to do that.
Okay, so you have the pairs in addition to these two, that's what I needed to know.
Sure, I have Anne and Anthony and a parent in each room.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Yep. Miss Lorraine and, and Miss Jan.
Lorraine, is it the lunch in the cafeteria?
The, the, the kids, most of the students, the nineteen of them go home before lunch.
Right.
And then the other ones eat in their room, in REACH.
In REACH, okay.
Just to be able to manage sort of, they're learning how to have their own lunch, open things, pour things. So it's sort of a teaching experience with the teachers?
Gotcha.
Yep. One more question. Of these thirty-one children, two of which are staff children, how many identified children are in the groups?
Off the top of my head, I would say four.
Okay.
That's off the top of my head. That's not a number I didn't prepare tonight, but I could get you that specifically.
Well, that's fine, just please.
And we definitely have more coming this year. So, perfect.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Great.
Just a couple of informational notes. We did, I did have a conversation today with Sandy DiBella, our head of nursing, just to be proactive on the Enverovirus G68.
Oh, yeah.
Just to make sure that we are, you know, using proper hygiene, et cetera, et cetera. We have, we don't have any cases, we haven't had any excessive absences, but we are tracking that. So we are, we do have, you know, a heads up on that.
Excuse me, is there any kind of protocol we're supposed to be following on that?
No, it's really just, you know, washing your hands.
Washing your hands. But I mean, if we get cases, do we have to report it to the state or anything? Is that crazy yet?
I, I, I know at this point, there hasn't been any health alerts from the state, but we're on top of it.
There's no, no... I mean, it's, it's the state, of course.
Yes. I did email the Selectmen last week and they are working on a letter to the editor. So, we'll see what happens with that. We were asked to check on that. I did go Saturday to the Big E in the rain and the crowds and I saw firsthand that our brochure in the Connecticut venue there with all the other brochures. I didn't see any of the schools, just us, so I thought that was good. Yes, that's above and beyond.
Who would've wanted to see you, right?
Well, yeah, I did.
I couldn't on the rain.
How was the roller coaster?
No, it was raining, it was cold, it was crowded.
So delicate, huh?
Yeah. Four-hour retreat, if you can read to page seventy-two in The Advantage, okay? It's in two weeks, you all have a little homework. And then the other thing, the nineteenth, which is I believe Friday, is the day that the advertisers are sending in their proposals. So I don't know if you wanna have a, maybe at the beginning of the retreat at five o'clock, have a couple of presentations and then do The Advantage? So this way we can move on that. Or if you want me to have another committee that meets at four o'clock, I was never meant to chime in.
Yeah, we can do that at five.
At five? Okay.
You're talking about PR?
Yes, PR. Okay, so I'll try to get them here at five o'clock. What happened last time is that Bob and I and Don went through the packets.
I think that belongs to the retreat.
Well, it would be, retreats are meetings, just so you know. Retreats, it's a, it's a board meeting.
I think it should be a business meeting, I really do. I don't think we should be, because frankly, I think if you're gonna have a retreat and you're gonna fill it up with business meeting stuff, what's the point in having a retreat?
So October...
Hold on.
Should it be called special meeting?
Hold on. Okay. Well, what, I mean, what's on the agenda for the retreat?
The Advantage.
Yeah.
Trying to, you know, some teamwork and...
I, I don't see any reason why we can't have this, because it's all about looking at the system, approving what we have and selling it, which should be very much on our mind.
Well, maybe it should be.
And maybe we should get it out there sooner or later.
Do you have an objection, Greg, to being... I do, I have an objection to it being a retweet, because I don't wanna have three business meetings a month. If that's what we're gonna do, then let's have three business meetings a month. But I don't wanna call something a retreat, because we wanna take people there and accomplish a specific purpose and then we load it up with business stuff.
Okay.
Fine. Okay. We'll do it in the future.
Okay, so with, October sixth, I won't be here, but you can do without me. Okay.
Can I add something to your talk about The Advantage?
Yes.
In, in reading it, there's very important kind of crux of the issue, depending on page seventy-two or seventy-seven, something like that. And I think if we actually read beyond that until, I think, the one-thirties, it really backs up what it asks of you on page seventy-two.
Okay.
If we just stop there before the meeting, we won't have a lot of the instructions and a lot of the backgrounds.
So you wanna read the clarity?
Yeah.
That's fine, so you're gonna, to just, okay, so we're gonna read then to page, I have it, I know that it is, I just didn't wanna give people too much work. One-forty, so read page one-forty.
So I've just made you read twice as much.
There you go.
Thanks, I'll watch you.
Okay? So we're gonna read to page one-forty.
Call me, I'll read it to you.
And that's that piece. We met tonight, our school research officer.
All right, hold on, please.
I'm happy to say that Michelle Seagerson is coming back to be a remedial tutor at Booth Free, which was great news. And sad to say that we have two fifth-grade teachers retiring, both to take other jobs. Not retiring, I'm sorry, resigning, to further their goals in life and in their profession. So...
How long have these ladies been with us, you know? Have you lasted?
Betty's been here a long time, yeah, probably around twenty-five years. And Carrie has been here at least twelve, thirteen years. I would say something like that, but I can get you that information.
All right, just wondering.
Yeah.
So who do we have to do things with?
Well, we are working on that. We have posted the positions. I know that Kathy has someone internally that she is working on who really thinks she's gonna do a great job. And Emily is interviewing as we speak. So we're doing our best.
Michelle?
Oh, I'm sorry, I think you said this and I only caught part of it, but the resignations, where do you move on for profession?
Well, yeah.
Teachers moving into administration?
Well, Betty is moving into a math position, where she really loves math and wanted to really be math. And because we now, you know, she's an elementary fifth-grade teacher and we don't have just math anymore, because as we get smaller. So she's specializing. And Carrie is going to be a lead teacher in Newtown, where it's quasi-administrative, because she wants to be an administrator.
Okay.
So we will keep our eyes and ears open and maybe be able to bring that back at some point.
So?
Well, but I think it's unfortunate that we started the school year in two classrooms, not their teachers, and then now they're totally disrupted. And I don't frankly think that was professional.
I understand.
One of the resignations affected?
One is October third. I think Betty is October third and Carrie is October eighth.
What?
You know?
Why, I mean, is that the way it's done?
It happens. It, it happens often. You know, it's a very, in the state, it's a very, it's kind of a snowball effect, someone leaves here and so this person goes there and then they have a vacancy and it kind of happens. And, you know, sometimes places budgets aren't passed, so they don't know if they're gonna have the position. You know, it's, it, it happens. It's not, it is unfortunate.
Well, imagine if you have significant problems for a fifth-grade teacher position.
Yes.
Does, does a tenure teacher not have a contract?
No. No, they all have contracts.
They all have contracts.
It's a labor contract.
But if they sign the contract for a year...
But they, they can leave, we, we're holding them to thirty days. So that we're doing.
Even with a contract, they can break it, the contract says that.
Yeah.
So the third and the eighth, that's with the thirty-day notice?
Yes. These came like the day or two right after the last meeting, so it was like, yeah. It happens, unfortunately, it happens. And, you know, kids are resilient and we have excellent staff that makes it a very seamless transition and they'll be fine. And that's it for my report.
Any questions? Okay. See you then.
Why, I have a question.
Yes, Peter.
I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but we're talking about spending money for doing different things in the school. What about the concept of sending letters out to the three communities about, for instance, the science lab? We need a new science lab, we need X, Y, and Z in our science lab. How would you like to have your, the science lab named after you? Private schools do it. They put ball fields in. Football, you go down to Gunnery and see what the, must be a two-and-a-half, three-million-dollar project. Certainly wasn't in their budget, I'm sure it was donated. Rumsey has a hockey rink. Somebody walked in, wrote a check for six million or whatever.
Yeah, but we have power that the private schools don't.
No, but what I'm saying is, why not solicit the people? Why not solicit that we're going to be doing, not right now, today, but we are working, the Facilities Committee is working on some concepts and things that need to be done. Why not, when it comes time, why not send a letter out to the three communities? Just as a...
Because that's not how public schools operate.
Well, we're gonna change the way public schools operate. Why not? Why do we have to be like every other public school?
If that's what the board decides to do and wants to do that.
The Pete Tagley nuclear collider. I like that. We'll be sending you a bill. Thank you for your pledge.
But it's a concept.
The board's a good one.
It may be timed, but...
Maybe that's something to discuss with the public relations firm, how they...
You're right.
You know, that could be a possibility.
It's always... So, thank you.
Well, yeah, after Pete donates very generously to Judea Nursery School, your letter is in the mail. It, the problem is, it's very costly and, and I'm afraid of having certain people direct that their money can only be used for this and there. And, but, you know, it might be worth a try, I mean, you know, but I, I would think as a public school, it would be complicated. But once again, the reason why I'm bringing this all up and getting involved in those conversations is to let you know that Judea Nursery School is starting a major fundraiser and your letters are in the mail.
Thank you for that.
Well, that, that's our, you know, you could model after us.
Spain under your pets.
You could model after us.
All right, let's move on. Consider it appropriate authorized into the year an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars in one percent capital reserve fund for a science, excuse me, science lab, chemical cabinet, and relocation of existing kilns at Shapawo School.
So, second?
All right, so we'll do second, just a discussion. I just, we discussed this in the Facilities Committee tonight and the, the kilns really need to be moved here in a location, apparently, that's created some concerns. The chemical cabinet is in severe disrepair. In other words, the chemicals are dissolving, which they have a tendency to do, and so it's time to replace it. Anything else?
But what is the problem with the killing location now? Just curious. Dissolving?
I guess it's an issue primarily of what venting it has and whether or not it's in a location that you can most best able to do it. It's gonna probably raise a concern of the NEAS level and it's a safety issue that we should just simply get out of the way.
Venting.
That was my understanding, it had to do with venting. I'm, I'm, Don is still here.
Partially, it's venting and safety, it's location. We're expecting NEAS to say it's in the wrong spot.
But it's always been in that spot, right?
Doesn't make it right.
It was never a good spot. It really was never a good spot.